Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Han?
Here.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Here.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? French, would you be in the same position?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just have a moment of silence? It's Press Cancer Awareness Month, the month of October. If we can just remember all those that are either suffering through or have suffered through. Councilmembers, on item five is the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Item six is matters from staff. Item A is Resolution 1451 Cooperative Grant Agreement, 2014-2015. This is discussion, consideration, and possible approval of Resolution 1451 authorizing participation in the local government road fund program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation. The total amount of the cooperative agreement will be $5,060 to be funded in proportional share by the parties here too as follows. New Mexico Department of Transportation's share shall be 75 percent or $63,795 and the town of TOS proportional matching share shall be 25 percent or $21,265. The intended use of the funding is to make repairs to the TOS Plaza roads. French?
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, good morning and thank you. I think you read it right from the agenda there, Mayor Protem. Basically, this is our application to an MDOT for our co-op project for the up and coming And attached to your agenda packet is an aerial photo of the roadways we're proposing to address with this money. And I seek your approval.
French, the roadways that they're looking at there, have those been identified as those in most need? Is that how it kind of?
Um, Mr. Mayor Protem, they have been identified. Basically, when we try and use cooperative money, since it's such a small dollar amount, we try to do projects that are going to become an over day and projects that already have the infrastructure in them. So they're smaller projects.
Okay.
And given the fact that the mayor and council have expressed interest in trying to address infrastructure in the downtown area, I thought this would be a viable project to try and meet those goals.
Okay. The councilmembers?
French? With $80,000, how much can you do? See, what would be the first priority, in other words, if you go out to bid on this project and you have, in other words, a bid in segments, so you say the section of roadway will be this much, the section will be that much, so that you can decide how much can be done with the $80,000 rather than going out to bid and it becomes $200,000 and you go out to bid again to reduce the scope of work, you know, place it in road sections to get them to bid each road section?
Yes, councilmember Peralta, the actual estimate was $104,000. However, some of that is utility work. So I would be budgeting out of the utility fund those monies to address the stormwater. And to answer your question, South Plaza would be the most important part of the, or the, yeah, the most important segment of roadways. We have an existing storm sewer that needs to be rehabbed, so, and it's right under South Plaza Road. That's where I'd say 80 percent of the stormwater ends up is right in front of the bank. So that would be the most important segment of these three roadways.
So the, just so I can understand what you're talking about, to replace that storm sewer, which way would you go from that? In other words, you've got a square there at South Plaza?
Yes.
And so that storm sewer, you would dig up and replace it, but which way would it go down? To the west of the bank, I mean north of the bank, or to the south? Which way does that storm sewer run?
There is a collector right on the east side of the bank, and it runs south to the intersection of Placita San South Plaza, then crosses the road right there and it comes out on Pitos. That's the outfall.
Okay. So that would be your first priority over the roadway between the bank and Garcia's shop?
Yes.
And then the last priority would be between that north alleyway?
Yes, that's correct. And the roadway that's between the bank and Mr. and Mrs. Garcia's shop, that would need to be milled out and have the vertical alignment changed because there's a portion of it that is actually lower than Placitas Road, and that's what causes the ponding at that intersection. So we would propose to, again, realign the vertical to make it run into the storm sewer and get it into a pipe versus surface flow.
What about the sidewalks in that area? Are they fairly decent condition or do they need to be replaced as well?
The sidewalk on the east side of the South Plaza has been rehabbed. We did that several years back. However, the sidewalk on the west side would need to be reconstructed.
So your estimate on the utility repair, which is the storm drainage, would be how much?
That one would be in the neighborhood of $30,000, $30,000 to $40,000. Again, it's a short stretch, but, and it's not that it doesn't function properly right now, it's that it's undersized and it surges all the way back up into the core of the plaza.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Espinoza, for your work and efforts here. One concern I have is that the town won't pay anything in excess of the total amount of this, which is $85,000 currently. What are the chances of us going over that $85,000 in total expenditures?
Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmember, the chances are very great that we will go over.
Very great.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, the estimated amount was $104,000. That's how we submit the application. However, we receive and accept whatever the state allocates. They never allocate 100 percent of what you're asking for.
So as we go through a step-by-step project, these four steps, I'm presuming that once we max out, we'll come back, you'll come back to the council, Mr. Bellis will appraise us, and we'll make a decision at that point.
Absolutely, yes.
And it sounds to me, after listening to councilmember Peralta, that you've actually triaged this, so worst first in this case. The timetable, French, I know that it's got to be completed by December of 2015.
Yes.
Can you give us an idea of which sections will be repaired first? Or is it too soon to tell?
Councilmember Han, it's a little too soon to tell. Rick and I need to caucus on this a little bit so that we can develop a plan so that we may approach the plaza merchants and the property owners. So at this point, it is a little premature to assess the timeline.
So to be determined. And that leads right into my next question, consultation with the business owners, Mr. Espinoza. That hasn't occurred yet, so they're not aware that this is in the works.
That's correct.
And you and Rick will be pursuing that at the appropriate time. And we're going to triage with phases. I presume there are alternative routes of traffic for, are these streets going to have to be closed? Are any four of these areas going to have to be completely closed for construction?
They will need to be closed down, yes.
And, so we're working, you'll be working on alternate traffic patterns?
Yes.
I'm going to defer to councilwoman Cantu. I think she has a concern related to business closures and such.
Councilwoman Cantu?
I was just wondering if we might try something different when the time comes for you to actually do this and for you and the town manager to consider doing this at night, the same way that they do their work in Phoenix, you know? It'll be the least problematic for the merchants than anybody else who might be concerned. It's just something to consider.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, following up on that then, Mr. French, is it possible to get this work done at night? Will that appreciably change the estimates and scope of work?
Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmember Han and Cantu, yes, it is possible to do it at night. And it's been our experience that we do pay a little higher price for that type of work. And the only business around the plaza that would have a concern with that would be the La Fonda Hotel, simply because it is a hotel and would be making noise at night and disrupting their clientele. But again, that's a possibility.
So if we do the work at night, is it possible during the day to get flow-through down those impacted streets?
It would be possible most of the time, but again, there will be a point where it will have to be closed down. There are utilities that exist within that roadway that we, I envision a lot of hand digging to get the storm pipe in.
And this makes me think about an issue that we have to deal with in the next 45, 30 to 45 days, and that's farmers market on Saturdays, whether or not it's going to be there again this coming year, and the community outreach, business outreach that we need to do.
Yes.
So I'm going to guess most of this work will have to be done next summer.
Yes.
So we're going to have to carefully coordinate. So nighttime operations are a possibility, but there'll still be some closures.
Yes.
Timetable is to be determined. You'll notify us if we start running over budget or reaching that cap. And we're going to triage. And alternate traffic patterns will be established when and where possible. Okay. Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralta?
Yeah, I was just going to point out that there's no way that you can do utilities and not have the road closed for probably a week to get that done. But the thing is that this could be done in the spring when the traffic's at a minimum rather than the summer when the traffic's at a maximum. So the quicker that we get to get this project on the board, that's the best time to do this, when we're at a low point in traffic in the plaza and avoiding the fall or the midsummer when you have the farmers market and all those other things happening. So, you know, this doesn't depend on hot weather in a sense to get it done. That would be my feeling and recommendation. I think the French would want to do the same thing because the more traffic you have, the more the cost is going to be because of traffic control and stuff like that the contractor has to provide, and that's going to increase the price and the cost of getting this done.
That's correct. Anytime we do work in the historic district, it's a lot of coordination and we never appease everyone. However, we try to do the best that we can.
Is there a possibility, French, on this, on that drain that goes in there to keep a 10-foot section of the roadway up against the park itself for traffic to go through?
There may be. Again, I'm envisioning when we do take out all the material that it's going to be contaminated soil, so new material will have to be brought in for backfilling. So anytime you do that, you'll take up one side of the driveline anyway, so.
Well, the reason I'm looking at, I'm just looking at the map, that's a fairly large corner.
Yeah.
And it would seem to me that there might be a possibility that if you, I don't know how the drain is in there, so I'm guessing, but if there was a possibility of keeping the lane of traffic open while they're working and taking up some parking spaces on the west side in order to take out the contaminated material and bring in the new one, then we could minimize the impact on the south side of the plaza.
Right, yeah, create a staging area right there and allow the traffic to circulate.
Or create the staging area on South Plaza Street.
Yes, that is a possibility. The other thing we need to, we'll have to make accommodations for is access to the banks since they do have the driveway and their parking area. So again, when we dig it up, we'll have to be putting plates over the excavations so the cars can access the bank.
Thank you.
So we'll probably have to do something like that, councilman.
Councilor?
Last question, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thanks for your patience. Mr. Bellis, I haven't had a chance to look, but I'm presuming that our 25 percent share is budgeted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, it's your pleasure.
Move for approval.
Second?
Been a motion and a second. Francilla, any call roll, please.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item B, which is Contract TT 15-114 Garcia Underground, Inc. Discussion, consideration, and possible approval of Contract TT 15-114 with Garcia Underground, Inc. in the amount of $546,437 plus grocery seeds tax for the Wymer Hills Water Distribution Project to include approximately 4,200 linear feet of 8-inch C900 water line and 8,150 feet of 6-inch C900 water line, including gate valves, fire hydrants, air vacuum valves, and water meter assemblies. Engineer's estimate was $892,840.90. French?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. As you can see, the engineer's estimate of $892 versus the low bid of $546, that's about a 30 percent difference from the low bid to the actual estimate. We had nine bidders propose on this. All nine bidders did attend the pre-proposal meeting, and they did visit the site and they submitted their questions. Each question was answered by the engineering firm. And again, I seek your approval on this item. Attached to your packet is a site map of where the infrastructure is going to be placed along with the engineer's opinion and background of the contractor, and a certified bid tab for the mayor and council's review. And with that, I will stop for any questions.
French, you had a question with regards to the bid amount that the contractor came in with. Where were the other bids in comparison to the engineer's estimates?
Have we ever used Garcia Underground before in any of the?
Mr. Mayor Protem, councilwoman Cantu, yes, they're doing the work right now on coming up in Lemerced. And in years past, they have done about 5,000 feet of water and sewer line for us on other projects. They completed Dillon Main Sewer Line last fall, so yes, they have.
Good to know. We haven't had any kind of problems with their work?
No, we haven't actually. No, they're familiar with the inner workings of parts of the water system, so, and they're very knowledgeable. They've been in business a number of years, and so, no, we have not.
Good to know.
Mr. Mayor Protem, French, it's my recollection also that our engineers on this project, Sattermell and Associates, have worked with them on other projects before.
That's correct.
And they are recommending it.
They are. There's a letter in the council's packet that does recommend them, and they go on to look back at their references and things of that nature.
Council?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. French, my concern about this project is it's 39 percent below the engineer's estimate. I'm concerned that we're perhaps, not that we are, but perhaps considering quality versus a low bidder. What's your opinion of that? I know I'm very little about Garcia's. I understand they've done work around town, but that's just a huge difference. Are there any red flags for you, any concerns?
Mr. Mayor Protem, councilmember Han, no, there are not. If you see the higher bidders, those are larger companies coming out of Albuquerque and Colorado, and they obviously have to pay a larger overhead. The way Garcia Underground bid this project was based on the fact that they're already in town, so their mobilization costs were minimal versus what the other contractors were bidding to transport their equipment into town. And basically, that's it. They don't hire out a lot of subcontractors. They get their materials from the same supplier as the rest of these companies do, so there are no red flags that I can see.
Thank you, French. And then, as I look at the map, I'm going to guess that the red line is our main.
That's correct.
Servicing the blue-lined laterals?
Yes.
And this is water and sewage?
This project is strictly water.
Strictly water?
Yes.
We don't have sewage lines up there yet?
We do not.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
And if you take a look at the map going down Santa Cruz, that is an 8-inch water main, while everything else on the top side and the bottom side of that is a 6-inch water Because we've utilized the same engineer over the past several years for the water study, they determined that that would be a supply line for when we do loop the system in the future. We have capacity to do that, so that's why it's an 8-inch versus a 6-inch.
Thank you, French.
You bet.
Any other questions from council?
Move for approval.
Second?
Been a motion and a second. Francilla?
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to item C, Resolution 14-54 Budget Adjustment Request. Consideration and Possible Approval, Resolution 14-54 Budget Adjustment Request to Community Grants Fund, Increasing Library Grant in Aid Revenue in Expenditure in the Amount of $1,280.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I indicated to the finance director she did not need to be here for this since it was such a small matter of C and D. Most surely has something to say. This is just one of those happy instances where you get more money than you anticipated, so we're adjusting the budget accordingly.
Always a good thing.
I have a question. Surely, in this year's ballot, we have more money for libraries. Do you have any idea how much you may be applying for out of that if it's passed?
We will receive approximately $31,000, which is a nice amount. The problem is that I cannot use it for staff salaries or operating expenses.
So do you have an idea of how you want to use that money?
We will probably be using it to update computers and other technology that needs to be done at that time. It takes approximately two years, and so if it passes now on this ballot, then we will receive it in approximately 2016. This year, we're receiving, which you guys already approved, the 2012 bond, and we're getting $31,000 from there. And I'm using it to replace computers, and I'm hoping to purchase a self-checkout machine so it'll help relieve some of the staff from the checkout duties so that they can do more of the customer service work. It just seems like it's more and more people need more help on how to even use the computers. You know, they're trying to apply for a job, and they don't even know how to get onto the website. So at this point, I don't have staff that can sit there with them to help them through things like that, but if I get a self-checkout, I might be able to say, we can help you do this, or we can help you do that. Or maybe put on a class so that they can learn how to do those things.
Thank you.
Anybody else? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
Second?
Been a motion and a second. Francilla?
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Awesome. So moving on to item D, New Mexico State Library Grant Aid. Consideration and Possible Acceptance of Grant from New Mexico State Library in the amount of $7,780, which is the annual state grant and aid grant that libraries receive.
Move for approval.
Second?
Been a motion and a second. Francilla, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item seven, Town Manager's Report. Mr. Manager, item A, Solicitation and Contract Attorney Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. After consultation with the prior attorney, Jake Caldwell, the mayor, myself, and the new attorney, and following up also on a number of meetings with individual councilors on various items, we believe that there's $60,000 in budget for contract attorney services that we anticipated we would be needing for individual issues. We'd like permission to issue an RFQ that would solicit services for one or more attorneys for those items that are listed there, and I think we're all fairly familiar with for those items that are listed there, and I think we're all fairly familiar with the affordable housing issue with MFA, and that there's some documentation that needs to be cleaned up to make them happy. And there are attorneys that have worked on that in the past, that are more familiar with it, so it would save some time to do that, rather than us having to refamiliarize ourselves with the issue all over again. In regards to Chinesa Verde, MFA has also indicated to us that they would like certain revisions and updates in the town's affordable housing ordinance before we would be allowed to proceed, and they would consider any actions we take to be valid. On the water law and rights issues, certainly we have the Veda settlement, spring ditch. In regards to the Local Economic Development Act, there was an update since our ordinance was passed, two items under the state legislation which need to be updated in the ordinance. Again, MFA and other state agencies have indicated that they would like, DFA would like to see changes in there. And we also would need to look at developing a proposal and scoring process that would rate projects before we could enter into individual LEDA agreements. One of the projects that's currently on our table is the Brock Creek Project that the town's been approached about, which would be using the Brownsfields and Sewer Plant. We do not want to indicate that this is necessarily an expenditure toward that project or any individual project at this time, but a realization that there's been some frustration on applicants that have approached the town, and I think on behalf of council and myself, that we're unable to give definitive answers to projects, because we've gone through so many attorneys and planning directors, and there never seems to be enough time to get this work done. So, I believe that is the recommendation staff, that the only way that's likely to get done in an expeditious fashion is to hire an attorney to focus entirely on that, and update the LEDA, as well as perhaps look at some of the processes that are already in place in other communities, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Okay. Counselors, any questions?
Mr. Protem, I do want to point out, for those at home too, this is a not to exceed that $60,000, which is already in the budget.
Move for approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just a clarification too, we're not going to be expending this money, it's my understanding, unless it's needed, so, there's no lockbox here, so speak.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Francilla?
Councilmember Kanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item B, Solicitation of Expert Witnesses.
Mayor Protem, similarly, there has been, both with the past attorney, current attorney, the realization that as we move particularly toward potential litigation on one or more water rates issues, that there may be the need to bring in expert witnesses over and above our current hydrological engineering firm. In particular, some of the studies that might impact that litigation were done by other hydrological engineering firms. This may also require some legal assistance. So, we're requesting, again, not necessarily an absolute, but in order to be prepared going forward, that should the town attorney need to solicit the services of one or more expert witnesses to defend the position of the town, that we be allowed that latitude, and enter into an RFQ at this time, to be prepared to react quickly.
Okay. Counselor Protem?
If I could, on these issues, wouldn't this fall under the contract we have now with our hydrologist for the most part, or are you looking for somebody outside of him?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I was looking at the contract with D.B. Stevens this morning, and it does embrace serving in this capacity in all cases that are pending litigation. The reason that we're asking for this is that the actual analyses of the town wells were done by another firm, and the Stevens firm is actually relying on the analyses that were conducted by Geotech, and so I have to file a witness list in one of the cases by the 15th of November, and I haven't gotten to the point where we've made a decision about whether or not it would be better for us to actually present the testimony as an expert of the person who did the actual studies of the wells, but I want to be in a position that I would be allowed to at least list them as witnesses if we go forward.
And if I could, just one last question, that would fall under the contract we have with Stevens?
The Stevens contract does embrace the servant as an expert witness in that case.
I'm just saying, the hiring of this other individual who actually did the study wouldn't fall under their contract?
I don't think that they would be required to pay to hire another firm to do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Han?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just a clarification here, Floyd and Rick, the $20,000, I'm not seeing that in the budget, so where's that go, comment from?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Han, I haven't seen the actual line item itself, and I've been advised by this February, and also by the town manager, that, and I have seen something that says that there's $20,000 available in the budget for litigation expenses. I'm not going to warrant that, but that's my understanding, and of course, the approval would be subject to availability of the budget.
Any thoughts on that, Mr. Bellas?
Yes, there is a line item for litigation, and I'm checking right now.
Is that on our attachment? I'm just not seeing it here.
It does not appear on this budget, however, there is a savings in line item for this year for the salary of the attorney due to the arrangement we had with the prior attorney, based on a three, 35-hour work week. In addition, there is $10,000 for representation in the town until some of the municipal court contract attorney, which neither the prior attorney nor the current attorney intend to So if there is not... I believe probably where the Finance Director was looking is under 44005, other contractual services related to depositions, as needed for pending litigation, $20,000, and then is it just below that also? These are both above that contract attorney line item, there is the $10,000 for the municipal court attorney if needed. And then there's the, as I said, there's a savings from the prior attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Bellas.
And we can clarify that and get back to council as to how that's to be paid. It might require a line item adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Han, I saw the $20,000 in a memo, I don't know that I, but I also thought I saw it as a line item. The deposition is something separate, that's for, you can pay the court reporter, my understanding is, if the court reporter were taking the deposition, we're going to need that too. But I will look into that, I have seen it somewhere, I'm not sure where.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval.
And a second.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, it just occurred to me, I remember why that would not be on here, because anticipated litigation costs would be under our one-time expenses, out of the departmental budgets.
Okay. Moving on to item C, Solicitation of Legislative Lobbying Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. As we're all aware, legislative session is rapidly approaching, our contract for lobbying services that we operated under previously expired on July 1st, and requesting permission, again, this is an item that on the attachment, you can see line item 55, we have a line item for lobbying services. We'd like to issue an RFQ at this time, there are a number of parties that have expressed interest in that, and we'd like to get the best deal possible, and come back to you for a recommendation on potential contracting with an individual or firm.
Rick, I guess the question and problem I have with lobbying services is, historically, if we pay lobbyists $35,000 and they secure 70, we've got $35,000. When we, I guess, send out the lobbying services, couldn't we do it on a portion of what's actually secured, as opposed to a flat contract amount? So, I guess I just, in a lot of instances, I guess I just feel that our best lobbyists are us, the council, and the mayor, as opposed to paying a lobbyist. Thoughts?
Mayor Protem, I tend to agree with you that I've found the experience of I wind up bumping into my lobbyist everywhere I'm going to ask for money, you're testifying, and either writing it for him, or he sits there and then says, I'd like Mr. Bellas to speak, or whoever the manager is. What I would suggest is, it doesn't hurt us to do an RFQ, but I would like to broaden the RFQ. It's something we did at the county to, not just before the legislative sessions, but to also lobby specific federal and state offices in regards to grants that would match our ICIP priorities we have. For example, if, we had a pretty successful meeting on this community service block grant yesterday, and it is amazing how much of a need there is out there for us to act as an intermediary to acquire funds for these organizations. So, if this is someone that I wouldn't want just to be a, you know, I know a few senators kind of a thing, we all know a few senators, but that had a demonstrated track record with the federal and state offices with those current directors, that could influence where our priority is in that list of other competitive funding that's available, not just the legislative appropriations, because as we all know, last year, all the representatives were capped on what they could give out, so between the town and the county, we pretty much got most of what was available.
Counselor Protem?
Mr. Bellas, my question is to, what are we asking for from the legislature this year? I mean, other than through the municipal league doing the changes to the lodgers tax, but I would guess that we should be probably sitting down and figuring out exactly what we want to be lobbied on, and that would determine what kind of a lobbyist we need, maybe, along with the ideas that you have for other lobbying efforts during the rest of the year. But I would think that we should have an idea as to what those might be in order to look at the person that we feel is going to be the best for that job.
Mayor Protem, counselor, I absolutely agree with you, there are a number of issues that have been discussed throughout the year that we have an interest in as municipality that would require some adjustment to legislation, and perhaps, do you, what I would suggest is either if you wanted to consider approving this contingent upon your direction in the work session to follow this, as to what those priorities should be, or if you wanted to adjourn the meeting and then come back and approve with a list of priorities that should be included in the scope of services.
Right off the top of my head, I can't think of those things that, you know, other than the one I just spoke of, that we need to look at, so it might be something that I would suggest that staff put together those priorities that they feel that we need to have, other than what I spoke of, and then bring that back and say, look, here's the things that we feel we need to work on, and in order to accommodate the priorities of the council, and say, look, this is where the services are, because I feel it's proper that we have a lobbyist, I'm not trying to get rid of one. What I want to do is make sure that we get the lobbyist that's going to do, or have the experiences that are necessary for us to accomplish the priorities that we have, and I just can't think of all of them off the top of my head, so, and in some cases, they may be projects that we need to do, but the costs of those need to be formulated in order for us to look and say, okay, here's a possibility of being able to get this or that or the other. I don't think there's going to be much money in this legislative session to get much done, but it's something we need to look at and say, here's what we can expect, and this is what it'll do.
Mayor Protem, councilman, I doubt we're going to get this drafted before next Tuesday, so perhaps I'll lay a third option, if you want to table it, we'll bring back a sample RFQ, and then we can have some discussion in the work session, but then also, I know if the councilors are like I am, you think of things the next day, and each of you can get in touch with me before then, and we'll have something for you to finalize on Tuesday's agenda.
I don't think we need to set priorities prior to 1st of December, as far as what the legislative session is, but you could give us an outline of the other areas that you feel that lobbyists can work on for us, and so the RFQs, I think you've outlined specifically what you want that lobbyist to do, so I'm not asking, I'm just saying that at some point in time, we need to sit down and say, okay, here's what we're going to go after in January, and then continue on through the year as far as what other projects that need to be looked at, and I would imagine most of these funding sources are going to be in the spring to summer anyway.
Depending...
Depending upon what Congress does, or the legislature does, after 1st of the year.
Okay. Counsel, how would you like to proceed then?
I'd like to move approval that we created RFQ for a lobbyist, in the amount budgeted. I'll second that for discussion.
Discussion?
And so, just for clarification, then, Councilman Peralta and Mr. Bellas, we're going to fine tune this, we're not just going to throw money out at a lobbyist to head down to Santa Fe and have a wonderful time for a week or two, we're going to try and give him or her specific tasks prioritized that we'll try and define quickly. Do I got that about right?
You got it right.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just feel we'd be better served until after our workshop to see what ideas everybody's going to be bringing to the table, you know, for discussion after this.
Okay. Francilla?
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, move for adjournment.
Second? Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, move for adjournment.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.